You are watching K O C T's North County Roundtable. On today's show, we have candidates for the Oceanside City Council District One.
Welcome to this special election edition of K O C T's North County Roundtable. I'm your host Kent Davey. On August 1st, 2017, the Oceanside City Council voted to adopt an ordinance establishing bi-district elections for city council offices. On this special election edition, we have the candidates for Oceanside City Council District One. If you're an Oceanside resident watching this program and want to know more about districting and what district you belong to, please log into the City of Oceanside website. Format of today's show will begin with one-minute self-introductions, followed by questions and answers. We've asked our candidates to keep their responses to a minute or so, so we can get in as many questions as possible. Take a brief break at the half-hour mark, followed by more questions and brief closing statements. Susan, would you like to start?
Hi, my name is Susan Custer, and I'm running for District One, City Council. I've lived in Oceanside for 36 years. My husband, John, and I raised our two sons here. I've been very involved in the community. I've been on the, in the Kiwanis for the last 10 years and president for three. I was, helped with crisis intervention for the Women's Resource Center, and I've been involved in the Relay for Life for the American Cancer Society. I'm also a Realtor in North County for the past 15 years. I'm running for the City of Oceans, for the Oceanside City Council mainly because I care very much about this city. I love this city. My concerns are safety and the schools and maintaining a good downtown district that brings tourists and makes our residents enjoy the downtown community.
Okay, thank you. Chuck?
My name's Chuck Lowery. I was born and raised here in Oceanside and established my business here for 24 years. I had a wholesale organic bakery right across the street from the television studio. Since that time, I decided to run for city council and have been on for the past four years. This is my first term. I am not a career politician. I'm there to get things done. That's why I am running for reelection because there's definitely a lot more going on in Oceanside that we still have to deal with.
Okay. Michael?
Hi, my name is Michael Odegaard. I'm born and raised in Orange County, California. Back in the mid-'80s, my parents moved to Bonzal when I was in college, and so we've lived in North County. And I've operated now a, an apartment building, Oceanside's first solar powered apartment building for 20, well, operated the apartment building for 24 years. And I'm running because I think we're far, we're missing the mark. We're headed in, I think, a very unfortunate direction. And with my background and career in community design, I think I can get us back on track with neighborhood representation.
Okay. Esther?
Hi, my name is Councilmember Esther Sanchez. I'm running for Oceanside City Council, running for reelection for District One, the newly-created District One. Our folks have been, my family's been in Oceanside District One actually since the 1930s. I have a law degree and I have a BA in urban studies. I've been planning, I've been a lawyer now for over 30 years. I ran for city council because I love Oceanside. I wanted to give back to Oceanside because I was able to do so much in my time, coming from Eastside. And the first four years, I did a lot. I was able to push forward the senior center at Alcora Zone. I was able to change the, the city, the direction of the city. We now have more jobs, more economic activity, jump-started development in the downtown area. Our quality of life is much better. There's still so many things, though, that need to happen. For example, the homeless issues, we really need to address that in a much more aggressive way. I know that's what I hear from, from our folks. And it's going to take more than two years. So my name again is Esther Sanchez, and I'm running for District One. Thank you.
Thank you. Start with our questions. I'll start with you, Susan. Do you support Measure X, the one-half-cent sales tax measure that's on the ballot?
I don't support the half a percent sales tax that'll be on the ballot this year. I think that, first of all, it'll hurt the lower-income people more than people with higher incomes. It's a regressive tax. I think that we need, get a lot of tax money from our vacation rentals. We got, got four point, I mean, $2.7 million in TOT tax in four months. I think that this is a much better resource. There is some interest in shutting down vacation rentals. I think it's better to tax the people that come here for only one or two weeks a year to enjoy our city rather than have a tax on residents that live here and support our city and want to enjoy it all year long.
Okay. Chuck?
I think the half-cent sales tax is a short-term fix to an ongoing problem that we have, providing adequate services for the residents of Oceanside. We need more police and fire employees and equipment. As anyone knows who lives around here and has moved around the city, we have a lot going on here, and we cannot keep up with the demand unless we are able to increase our income. So the city will use this money specifically for needs that we have. It's not going to go into some slush fund somewhere. This money's going to be used specifically for first responders, for much-needed road repairs, and other issues that we don't have adequate funding for currently. In addition to that, we're putting it to the vote of the public. This is not something the city council can decide to do on their own. The half-cent sales tax will bring in 11 million, about $11 million a year in income, and it has a seven-year lifespan. That's all it's going to be, is seven years. So I support this, and I hope the voters of Oceanside see the need and will also support it.
Okay. Michael?
I agree with both points, I mean, by Susan and Chuck, but I think that because it's a temporary tax and it's needed, we have to have a solution in the next four years before we go into a deficit situation. I don't know how else we can make up for the purse expenses that we have coming down the line. So at this point, a seven-year commitment, I don't think is forever. And I've seen other situations where, once the tax is got, is finished, it's, it's out of the way. So I see this as a way to show our city employees that we appreciate what they're doing, and I'm all for it.
Esther?
The half-cent sales tax, I support after much, after considering a lot of the same things that were raised about, you know, how is this going to impact our low-income families, our seniors? I've been on the council now for a while, and what I set out to do was to increase revenue for the city. We don't have a car country, so it had to be sales tax and hotels, build more hotels, and we've done that. But we still have so many needs, especially infrastructure. So we need a new Fire Station One, we need a new Fire Station Eight, we need to do renovations at the beach, we need, we need basically public safety. And in order to maintain the quality of life that residents have been able, or yes, have been able to rely on, we need to do this. So I understand it'll be about $68 a year for the average household, and it would raise $11.2 million that can, you know, meeting, matching funds can be a lot more. It's for seven years. And I think because there'll be a citizens review onboard, that it will basically keep us in, on track in terms of what, what we're, how it's being pitched. So yes, I do support it.
Chuck, if Measure X fails, where do you get the money next to try and do the police and fire, to do some of your road work, some of the other things that are on the list?
If we're going to maintain the level of service we have in the city, we need additional funding. If we are going to not have that funding, then we're going to have to tighten our belts to make it so that we can continue to operate at least at the level that we are right now. Emergency calls through the fire department are up 15 to 18% a month over a year ago, and it's a critical time that we look at the needs of the community rather than looking at saving a few cents out of every day's purchases. I think it's urgent that we move in a positive direction to deal with the issues, the infrastructure issues. And I want to mention that the Proposition Six, if we pass that on a statewide level to remove the SB 1 gas tax money, that the city will lack even more funding because we are currently using funds from that gasoline tax to rebuild our roads right here in Oceanside and bridges. So we're using all that money that's coming in right now.
Michael, same question?
Well, whether it passes or not, I think that we need to look at the possibility of restructuring the way we go about our planning procedures in the city. With the gray wave, we have thousands of qualified retired people who are contributors to the vibrant scene, the success of our neighbors, our neighborhoods in Oceanside. And they are, I think, very capable of forming policy for their own neighborhoods. One of the issues that we've experienced in the last eight years is not enough neighborhood protection. We're losing parks. The city's proposing to lengthen the walk shed to be able to get to a park from 10 minutes to 15 minutes. So I think the city's depending too much on its own resources, and I think there's ways that we can distribute responsibility throughout the city in a way that actually makes our neighborhood stronger.
Esther?
You know, I've never been in favor of a tax before. I thought we ought to try every other way to increase revenues to the city. Unfortunately, we've not been able to do more. I think we have not focused enough on creating more commercial activity in Oceanside. We need to have more, we have actually the lowest jobs-to-residence ratio in the county, and that is not a good thing. So I've looked at everything, and if this doesn't pass, we have serious infrastructure issues. At some point, we're going to have to address them. And we've, we've, after, after the recession, we cut back a lot. We cut back over 100 employees. We've not really brought back very many at all. The only, we are actually at a time right now that we have a hiring freeze, call it a soft hiring freeze, because we definitely need to address our, 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 our needs. So if we, if it doesn't pass, we have to find a way of increasing revenues into Oceanside.
Susan?
Well, first of all, I think it's important that we know that this is not a half a cent sales tax, but a half a percent increase in the sales tax, which will be greater than if it was just a half cent. As I said, I think we can get a lot from the TOT tax. In addition to the TOT tax, we also get a lot of tax revenue from the auxiliary businesses that are supported by the vacationers, such as the restaurants and the shops and so forth. I'm for responsible spending before increasing taxes. And another thing that we could do is, for example, Vista has saved $600,000 by not sending a fire truck every time an ambulance goes out. I think this would be a good thing for us to do. It's not necessary to always have a fire truck. The paramedics can be on the ambulance. So these are some of the measures I think we can take to save money rather than increase taxes.
We've heard mentioned now several times already of infrastructure needs. In your estimation, Michael, what is the top priority for Oceanside's infrastructure need?
Without a doubt, we are in, in a time of unprecedented drought, unprecedented costs of electricity. Our utility costs are going through the roof. And presently, 60% of our housing is private, which has had plenty of federal and state incentives for people to go solar. What we're missing right now is that big 40% chunk of our rental housing, which has absolutely no incentives. We went ahead and went solar for ethical reasons, and we're glad that we did because we're, we've frozen in our energy costs. But we have businesses that are struggling right now. And there's a San Diego gas and electric program called Power Your Ride, which actually pays for infrastructure. And so with a combination of private, micro-level infrastructure installations and the provision of county-wide programs, I think we can fill in some of those gaps.
Okay. Esther, same question?
I think, without a doubt, I believe Fire Station One is top of the list because we need to have Fire Station One. We're increasing our population downtown in the surrounding area for, for Fire Station One, which is, as I said, downtown. But it's not earthquake-proof. It's not big enough to really house what we need in terms of a, of an, a fire engine. So that would definitely be, you know, the, the public safety, always number one. And then, of course, we need to have the renovations at the, at the pier. Those are, you know, we can't allow an accident to happen. I mean, certainly wouldn't want to close down that area. It's very, very popular for, for all people. So I would say that. Fire Station One, Fire Station Eight, and the police department, and, and the bathrooms at the, at the pier.
Okay. Susan?
I agree with Esther that we do need to make these improvements to the downtown fire station. It is small. There's a lot of growth in population and tourism down there, both of which will, do require a quick and, you know, proper response to any situation. Also, Coast Highway still needs some more improvements, the roads. There's a lot we could do to make it not only more efficient, but more beautiful down there. And there's a lot of potholes throughout the city, and so road conditions throughout the city that need improvements. So these are some of the things that I would think we need to focus on.
Okay. Chuck?
I think that our number-one need in the city is clearly enhanced public safety. That includes everything we've talked about prior to this, the hardware that we have, more firefighter paramedics, more police officers who are prepared to do the job and want to live here in Oceanside. It's not simply a matter of hiring more people. It's a matter of getting people who we can afford to hire and have them stay on the job rather than having to commute up to Riverside County to live. They can live right here in Oceanside if they are able to buy housing that's affordable for them. That's another reason we have to work on increasing our housing stock here for individuals, and we have investors willing to come in to develop and build properties that we need at all price levels. And it's not simply a matter of looking at a one problem and having that be our all, end-all problem or circumstance we have to deal with. We can look at each one of these elements separately. We don't have to say, we've got to do this, 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 and this. We can do what we can afford to do. Last year on the city council, we had the opportunity to vote to spend $1 million on saving the pier from closure because the materials that are 85 years old are rotting. So we've lost on that item on the council. I'm very disappointed that I lost that item. So I think it's really important that we do it as we're able to pay for things.
Okay. Esther, do you support the SOAR initiative that's on the ballot? Why or why not? And could you tell me why District One residents should care about it?
Yes, I do support SOAR, which is Y. So yes, I'm saying yes on Y. And for me, it's an economics reason, or reasons, because unfortunately, we have, we're not paying attention to staff, we're not paying attention to criteria that we ought to be following to be able to do planning in a, in a very smart way. It's called smart growth. So I think that the council, unfortunately, majority of the council, has taken us in a direction that is putting us at risk in terms of our finances. So the reason why I'm concerned about it is, we need to have, if we're going to have housing, it's got to be smart growth. It's got to be along transportation corridors, it's got to be close to services. That's why the focus is on Fire Station One and Fire Station Eight. Make sure that, you know, we can't afford to spend money on, on a place that has no water, no sewer, no infrastructure improvements at all. Water, oh my gosh, water is, is something that's becoming very, very critical. So I feel, yes, that we need to put in SOAR because that way, the people will be able to vote on, and all it is, is changing the zoning, that's all. You know, right now, we have up to two and a half acre lots that can be created. Same thing will happen after SOAR.
Okay. Susan?
I do not support Measure Y, the SOAR initiative. I think, first of all, we already have, or, city ordinances, ordinances in place to protect our parks and open spaces. In order to change the zoning of a park, it already has to go before a vote of the city at large. I think that SOAR removes private property rights. The city at large would then be able to vote on zoning issues in the Morro Hills area just for rezoning that part of the city. Other parts of the city, if they, anyone wanted rezoning, it would still go before city council. I think it's important to treat the city in the same way throughout the city. Not all residents of the city will have the time or the interest to review changes to zoning in this one part of the city, which could be quite some ways away from where they live. That is what the city council is responsible to do, is to review staff reports, zoning changes, and make decisions. So I think it's important for private property rights to protect these, that by not passing SOAR. And also, the developers would have to bring in a lot of these services to that area if they're going to be developing them.
Okay. Chuck?
SOAR, what a great idea that is. It's, it's an excellent concept. It's emotionally very hooking, and it, we want, we want to save our open spaces, but the open spaces are all private property, so I don't know why that's even a question. We want to save our parks, but no one wants to use up our parks. The parks are already regulated to stay as parks. And the idea of preserving our farmland, well, the SOAR would, would shackle the farmers to what they have right now. And the farmers, if you speak to the farmers, they say that it will bankrupt them. So if we want to save our farmlands, we have to be aware of, the farmers need to be able to do their business on their own without us telling them, we don't want you to do this. So SOAR is a great idea on an emotional level if it were doing what it's actually being sold to do. And it is not going to save our parks, it is not going to save our farmland, and it's absolutely not going to do anything other than put the onus of any project onto the developer or proposal of that project. The farmers need to be able to make their own decisions.
Okay. Michael?
Well, it is a good idea, and in fact, it's necessary. I graduated from UC Irvine, and as a student, I was able to represent the 24,000 students on the master planning of that campus for the following 35 years. And if anybody knows anything about UC Irvine, we keep the sacred center sacred. We don't go into that area. And it's part of what makes that university great as it was designed. A general plan is like a contract, okay? Too many of us think like Realtors. They say, location, location, location. But my background, being a Pacific Rim person, my mother's from Hawaii, descendant of the people who brought the idea of real estate to Hawaii, we've been in this business for a long time. We understand that it's location, location access, or location, location laws, okay? What keeps us from killing each other as a society, whether that be through slow death, by starving each other, not giving each other enough water, whatever it is, is by keeping our laws. And we've seen too much abuse, too much exploitive development by people who have no long-term interest in our city. SOAR is necessary, but it's not enough. We also need the right for neighborhoods to be able to veto a project that doesn't fit in with our vision.
Okay, thank you. You're watching a special election edition of North County Roundtable featuring candidates for Oceanside City Council District One. We're going to take a short break and return with more questions for the candidates.
She's won, and she's running for president, potentially in 2064. Because if she's kept safe and eats well, has the opportunity to learn and grow, if she has help getting ahead and support along the way, then Zoe could be president. Like her hero, Ababam Binkin. Help kids like Zoe dream big. The Y for early learning, childcare, mentorship, and more. For a better us. Donate to the Y at ZoeForPresident.net.
Welcome back to this special election edition of North County Roundtable. I'm your host Kent Davey, and we're speaking with candidates for the Oceanside City Council District One. We're going to start this round of questioning with Esther Sanchez. The pension costs in the city continue to rise. We've got an unfunded pension, I believe, deficit or, or bill sitting out there of $230 million. There's an extra couple million dollars a year for the next five years that CalPERS needs. What do we do about that?
Well, we pretty much have done a lot of creative things. We've, we've certainly shared the problem with our employees, and they're taking up more, more of the, of the costs. We've also put away some funds, $10 million to 115 Fund. It's a, it's a trust which will earn, it's a little more risky, but you know, still within the realm, so it'll, it'll actually earn more interest, and that interest will go towards paying off the pension. And we've been doing prepayments as well as extra, extra funds, so that's how we're getting through this. But our, I have to say that our, our employees have actually been picking up the burden as well.
Okay. Excuse me. Michael?
Well, I wish you weren't asking the same questions that the other forums are asking us, because I feel like this is kind of like spinning our wheels a little bit here. And to be honest, I don't have a lot of background in pension planning, but I would start by saying that, yes, we all need to make sacrifices. But you know, that's, that's not the skills that I have to bring into this race. My background in community design is what, is what's missing on this panel. And we've already done a significant amount of build-out of our city, our downtown area. I've seen the, the quality decline, and these are some of the issues I'm concerned about. My background also in the public sector as a city planner gives me a little more insight as to how we can fine-tune the way we run things in our city. I've seen lots of ethics issues, and we want to make this a place where people feel that the average citizen matters. Too many of us have been alienated by this tweedest, I think, kind of attitude that seems to predominate in our city government.
Okay. Chuck?
A $230 million debt is a serious chunk of change. And last year on the city council, we had the opportunity to pay that down by $1 million, but my opponent on the council voted no on that, while I voted yes. We had the opportunity to save well over $1 million because the interest rate on that money is significant. So here we are, trying to figure out how we're going to pay that down. And again, it winds up being that we can only cut our immediate costs because the pension debt is money that we are paying to our employees after they retire, and we committed to paying them that money. So that's why it's a problem. The state coerced us, all, all the cities, into paying into this PERS program, and now the PERS is not able to keep up with the demand. So the cities have to, as individual government agencies, have to come up with our own ways to wrangle with that commitment, and that's what we are doing. The city's doing pretty well with it, but it's a steep slope coming up in the next few years, and I have no idea how we're going to deal with that if we don't increase our revenue streams within the City of Oceanside.
Susan?
Yes, $230 million in unfunded pensions is a big problem. We do have the 115 Fund, which the proceeds from that fund go to pay down the unfunded pension. pension. I think this is a good first step towards resolving this issue. We do have to somehow stop the increase from being as great as it is. And the only way I think we can do that is by having the employees take on more responsibility for their own retirement, as the private sector has done. We can also consider some outsourcing so that we don't have to continue to pay jobs for a long time into the future. And the half a percent sales tax goes into the general fund, so that will not go to help the unfunded pensions at all. So this is something we do have to work on aggressively, and hopefully, the employees will be able to take on more of this burden.
Okay. Michael, do you have any suggestions on how to break the logjam of indecision with regard to Buena Vista Lagoon, which is year by year silting up? Should it be freshwater, saltwater? Both?
It's a complicated issue. And in the last few weeks, since I declared my candidacy, I actually have interviewed residents of St. Malo and across the way in Carlsbad. And I think that there's a way we can work through the concerns of the St. Malo residents to preserve their privacy, to preserve their access. People want to be able to walk to Carlsbad. That's one of the beautiful things about Oceanside. We can walk all the way from Camp Pendleton down, as far as you want, really. But at the same time, yes, it is silted. And a lot of people feel that allowing the waters to flow naturally again will actually help us replenish our sand. So I think there's a lot of interesting perspectives, and I don't think I have a final solution to it. But I do like the idea of keeping that sand flowing out. So that's where I stand at this point.
Okay. Chuck?
Currently, the state of California will not allow the city to make the choices that we need to make around the lagoon. The city can choose to cooperate, because this is a county situation where we have two cities involved, and the county agency called Sandag, which is the Association of Governments. They are having to find what we can do to be in compliance with state regulations. And state, at this point, will only approve the saltwater alternative. They don't care what we have to say about people walking on the beach or going from Oceanside to Carlsbad. They only care about returning the lagoon to its natural state. A lot of the people who live around the lagoon are calling it a lake. It is not a lake. There's a lot of confusion that they're choosing to see there. It is a saltwater body that is dying from the silting and all of those plants that are growing there. You see all the cattails, millions of cattails. That's a massive breeding ground for mosquitoes, and there's no way to stop that unless we do the saltwater alternative.
Okay. Susan?
Well, I think that it is a very difficult issue to address. I have not looked into it deeply. I need to research it further. But we do have to find some way to work with the two cities and with the various government organizations involved. It's always difficult to return an area of land back to its natural state and work with the community that currently lives around it. So this is something we do have to address, and I'll be looking further into it.
Okay.
How do we end the logjam on the Buena Vista Lagoon? I happen to have been on the Coastal Commission during the first logjam, which was the ending of, or the stoppage of, the environmental studies. Because at that point, they wanted to, the environmental organizations wanted to study mostly the saltwater. So I was able to discuss the matter with Sandag, then Executive Director. And Sandag then took it upon themselves to go ahead and continue and complete the environmental studies. It is a very, very critical situation because it's unique in that the state owns, I believe, 90% of the lagoon. Residents at the mouth of the lagoon own the opening, so that's what the problem is. Because some of the residents want to maintain a freshwater, and the rest of it really makes, in order to restore it, it would have to be really saltwater. And that is the only one that would actually give us the kind of funding to actually, to fix it. It would be the highest rating for a mitigation project for the I-5 widening. And in fact, it would have gone straight to the top on the Public Works list for the Coastal Commission. So I think we just need to educate our folks and move towards that solution.
Thank you. Chuck, should the city of Oceanside ban short-term vacation rentals?
Short-term vacation rentals, in case people don't know it, are Airbnb operations where someone has a home or a small apartment building, and they rent the places out on a daily rate. And the city has no regulations currently in place to regulate short-term vacation rentals because we have not had the willpower on the city council to do anything about it. I currently have two directly behind me, and when people come there for the weekend, they're there to party. They're not there to rest up with the kids. And they are unwilling to cooperate with their neighbors. They just want to make that $175 a day that they're renting the single-family homes for. The problem with just coming up with regulations is that people see that as a challenge to business operations. Well, it seems counterintuitive to buy a house and convert that into a hotel, which is what people are doing. I have taken numerous complaints from people in my neighborhood here in District One for the last four years. Neighbors are not necessarily next door to the complaints. They lose parking because people park their cars everywhere. They also have trash on the yard. Dogs are abandoned all day long, so they leave the dogs out barking. There needs to be some regulation from the city, and it does not have to be oppressive regulation.
Okay. Susan?
I do not think the city should ban short-term vacation rentals. As I said, the TOT tax brings in a lot of revenue for the city, and as we've talked about, we need that revenue. The vacation rentals alone brought in $2.6 million in TOT tax in the four months ending March 31st. That's expected to increase by 10% next year. There have been some issues, but I think that with more city oversight, these could be taken care of. We may need to have something like on-call code enforcement during times when, overnights and weekends. There's got to be a way the city can license, regulate, and enforce any issues, perhaps fines for vacation rentals, the homeowners that do not follow the rules and cause a nuisance. There is going to be more parking coming online downtown. I think this will help too. But we do need that source of revenue from the vacation rentals.
Okay. Esther?
Yeah, we first saw this on the coastal areas west of I-5, and now we're starting to hear a lot of, I guess, complaints from east of I-5. And certainly, I believe that we need to find a balance. Our residents, neighborhoods were not really built to, you know, address commercial activity, a lot more traffic, you know, trash. And so what is that balance? I think that's what needs to be addressed. The Planning Commission is looking at that, and that will certainly come to the city council. But yes, TOT is very important to the city, you know, revenue. But I think we also need to balance that against neighborhoods. So it's going to be an interesting conversation. We did try to address that before, but actually never got to the council because staff in opening up to the public comment got slammed. And so now that we've heard from the Coastal Commission, now that we've heard, say, from the city of San Diego on what possibilities we can do in terms of regulations, I think we're ready to take that step.
Okay. Michael?
Well, I will just piggyback off of what Esther said. San Diego has spent extensive time looking at all of the issues. And how do we develop codes that fit the types of actual businesses that are happening here? The problem with the city right now is our codes are atrocious. We are approving 10-room mega mansions on residential standards, only requiring two parking spaces in them. And yet, the next day, they're being rented out, and we have, you know, chaos for our neighbors. And I just don't think it's right, you know, for the city, or for city planners, or whoever, to implement policies that are not enforceable. And in fact, our city staff says they're not interested in hiring weekend code enforcement staff. So I think we have to look at this very conservatively, and we have to put our own people first. We have taxpayers who would like to get some value out of the taxes we pay to the city.
Okay. Susan, the Tri-City Medical Center announcing that it wants to close, or it's closing their 18-bed behavioral unit. Do you have any thoughts on what the impact to the city is going to be if that happens?
Well, I do think it could have a negative impact in that it could result in an increase in homelessness of people that need the mental health facilities. This is also one of the more difficult homeless populations to find services for. I think it's a separate entity from the city, and there's not, the city itself can't do anything about the Tri-City Medical Center. But I do think it could have a negative impact on the city.
Okay. Esther?
You know, we were all surprised when we heard, I think it was a press release that happened, that was put out the day after the decision, and there was hardly any notice about that decision having been made. And it is going to hit us very, very hard in terms of public safety if we can't take our mental health patients. A lot of times, people wait, families wait until the very last minute to call 911. And of course, we also have, you know, our homeless issue. So this is going to hit us in terms of public safety, having to transport, take longer to go to either Palomar, or even, they're talking about San Diego, UCSD. It is really going to hit us. And I believe it's, you know, the total cost to each of the cities, as well as the county, is much bigger, I believe, than what the cost would have been to Tri-City. I feel that we need to go to this emergency meeting that is being held October 30th, that is being called by the county. All the cities are going to be there. And we need to reopen these two units. It's really, really critical to the city of Oceanside and to the health of our community.
Okay. Michael?
Will you please repeat the question?
Sure. Tri-City Medical Center has decided that it needs to, for financial reasons, close its behavioral unit. That currently leaves Palomar with a behavioral unit and another one down off of Rose Grants, I believe, for the county. And I'm curious as to what you think about that decision and its impact on the city of Oceanside.
Obviously, it was a very unfortunate decision. However, I don't think that we can put this off. I've heard too many excuses that, you know, we have homeless or mental health issues, that there are regional problems. As far as I understand right now, Oceanside's share of the 123,000 homeless in California comes out to about 50 people. And one of my guiding values is Ohana. I teach Hawaiian language, by the way. And some of you are familiar with the idea of Ohana. Nobody forgotten, nobody left behind. I think we should start by taking care of our own. And I have made the commitment that if I'm elected, half of my salary will go toward the starting of a homeless therapeutic community. It can be a central repository for social services. I figure with my salary, over four years, I can pay for 10 tiny homes. And this is going to be something, I think, that will become a cause for our city. It's something that we needed yesterday. And I don't see any reason why we should delay in doing, solving that on a city basis.
Chuck?
You know, I have to say that I have talked with hundreds of residents in the past four years, and their number-one concern is homelessness. And in that context, if we had very comprehensive behavioral centers in the city of Oceanside, it would help a lot of our community in general, and the homeless community in particular. Just this past Saturday, we had two individuals in separate situations. One woman killed herself in the river, a homeless woman. And later the same day, another woman died of a drug overdose. And our police force is out there trying to hook these people up with needs that we have within our community for whatever it is that's going on. We have a lot of vets who are there, living in the river. It's completely an inappropriate situation. If we are not able to provide emergency mental health care for our community members, whether they are wealthy families or poor homeless people living in the river, we have to really look at what we are as priorities. And I believe that the county has the funding to help us bridge the existing gap between when we can have other resources come in to help us fund the existing center and when we are able to put up something permanently. So I hope the county comes through with the money. They have the money.
Esther, what can be done to increase the stock of affordable housing in this city?
I think that the granny flats, the state law that allows for people to create yet another livable space, the way we've adopted it is you can actually have it connected to a house, and there are lower requirements in terms of costs of issuing the permits. And certainly, we also need to do, to relook at Oceanside Boulevard vision and start talking about implementing a plan of having more businesses and mixed use and having more housing along major transportation corridors. We can increase housing along Coast Highway. We have a lot of infill that we can do. Affordable housing, for sure. We need to, you know, partly also look at the short-term rentals. I think that balancing that out will increase a little more of the housing. But bottom line is, even our affordable housing for a family of four, you can make over $48,000, and you still qualify for affordable housing. So we are talking about workforce housing, and we just need to increase densities along transportation corridors.
Michael?
This has been one of my questions in my professional career as a community planner and community designer. Back in 1991, I walked 100 miles between Pasadena and Tijuana to raise an awareness of the fact that we need more affordable housing in Southern California. And what I've come to realize in my profession as a planner and as a provider of affordable housing, as an apartment owner, that we have to acknowledge that rental housing is a big part of that. And oftentimes, the idea of not enough affordable housing is really just something that the state uses or developers use to browbeat us, when in fact, Oceanside provides more affordable housing than any of our neighbors. And so we have a very good way of addressing that. We need to maintain the rent control for our senior communities, for our mobile home communities. Some of our tenants, after living, they don't know if they're going to move into, what kind of housing they're going to move into. Sometimes they'll buy a mobile home. And Oceanside, I think, is doing more than its share in that regard.
Okay. Chuck?
So we're talking about affordable housing. And what that is, is small homes for people who are working families, or people with special needs, seniors or veterans. It's not just lower prices in the general marketplace. And I've only been here for three and a half years. My first year, I went to Washington, DC. I brought back vouchers from the federal government that housed 45 of our homeless veterans. I was able to go back a second time and get 40, no, it was 40 the first year, 45 the second year, 25 the third year. And no one has ever asked for that before in North County, but I was able to bring that back from my first trip, and we have continued to work with the federal government to have more housing access for community members who need it. In addition to that, we have built some of our own affordable housing units along Mission Avenue. And one of my first decisions that I made on the city council, I'm happy to say, was to vote for a project that included 38 affordable apartment units for families and people who needed them. That was built over the objections of a few community members. And my opponent here, who I'm running against on city council, fought tooth and nail to stop that housing. And now there are families living there who, in the past, were living in their cars on the streets.
Okay. Susan?
This is a land use-- This is a land use issue. I think that we need to have higher-density housing will help to resolve this issue somewhat. And also, a faster and less expensive permitting process can keep the cost of development down, which could then be passed along to more affordable housing for the residents and employees. We need to have, mainly the higher density and the lower cost of building the houses would be the main things to help bring this down.
This brings, this program, or that brings this program to a close. We need to go to closing statements now. We're going to start the other directions. Start with Esther and come this way.
Thank you. Well, I'm Councilmember Esther Sanchez, and I have, through my leadership, we've changed dramatically in Oceanside, a lot of very, very positive changes. Our crime rate was at an all-time high. That's been lowered. We've lowered the response times. We've had more parks built. We've had more hotels built. We've increased our revenues. A lot, a lot of positive things, but we still have some major difficulties now. We have the homeless issues. The homeless issue is going to take a lot more than a couple of years to resolve. It is a regional problem. We are, we at the city are applying for a grant. Obviously, we'll be, also be able to, if Proposition X passes, which is the half-cent sales tax, we'll be able to use some of those funds as well to address our homeless issues. But it's a regional, we have the hot team through the police and a social worker providing services, referrals. But once before, what cities did was put money into a pot to build housing somewhere in the county, in the North County, and that was in Vista. There's so much that needs to be done. We need to provide more jobs in Oceanside. We need to, the infrastructure projects that would be built by Proposition X. I want to make sure that we actually do what we promised to do to build those infrastructure projects and El Crozón. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Esther. Michael?
Is this our final statement for the night? Okay. Well, thank you, first of all, for your kind hosting tonight. It's, for many of you that don't know me, I hope that you get a chance to get to know me better. I have a Facebook page, facebook.com/odegard, O-D-E-G-A-A-R-D, for District One. Back, forward slash, I guess, is what it's called. My background in community planning and design is what is needed on our council right now, as well as someone that's not so tied into the elite system, that's afraid to demand higher standards of accountability, higher transparency, no tolerance for transactional conflicts of interest. This is unfortunately what has driven me to try to do something about it. And I think we've covered most of the issues. But also, I wanted to mention that I've been interviewing people. By the way, 10:30 every morning, you're welcome to meet me on the pier. And a gentleman I met today has moved out of Oceanside to Vista. You know, you keep in mind that we are a city in competition with other cities. And Vista has increased their residential parking requirements while we're talking about decreasing. In fact, we have been. So there's a lot more to talk about it. Let's do it online.
Thank you very much. Chuck?
Thank you. I think it's important that we, as individual members of the city of Oceanside, decide what we really want for our futures. If we want a future that excludes certain people at the expense of other people or includes people who have already the resources to take care of themselves, I think that's not really what we want to do. I think what we want to do is listen and do what I've been doing for the last four years and learn. And I've listened to, when an issue comes up to the city, I go out and do my own homework on it. I speak to staff, I speak to residents, I speak to other council members so that I can get the idea of what is needed. I decide, once I've gathered all that information, to make the best decision I can for the entire community, not just for some people who live around my block or somebody who lives in my neighborhood. It's really important that, as a council member, we continue to show a willingness to work across the aisle, which I have done for the last four years. It's impossible to say I'm from this party or from that party and make a decision just based on political agendas. We must listen to the people who live in Oceanside and learn from those who know more about it than we do. And that's why I'm running for reelection in District One.
Thank you. Susan?
I'm very concerned with the districts now that we're in districting, being able to work together and work for the city at large. So we have to be sure we represent not only our own district, but the whole city. Because even though other districts can't vote for me, I will be voting for them. So I'm committed to making sure that I take, address all issues with a focus of what's good for the city of Oceanside. I think one of our, that our downtown area is a very important revenue stream for the city, and that is in District One. So it's important that we focus and maintain that. We do need to continue to bring employers in, and schools are very important for this. For the high-paying jobs that we need to bring into this community, the employers and employees are going to want good public schools. So we have to bring the numbers up there. We also have to focus on the congestion downtown. I've talked to a lot of residents in the downtown community that live there, in the CSAG community, and they're very concerned about traffic and traffic speeding through their neighborhood. Something has to be done to address that. There's been some various, very serious near misses in that part of the community. So I'm number one on the ballot, Susan Custer. Please vote for me. Thank you.
This brings us to a close. Thank you all, City, Oceanside, City Council, District One candidates who participated tonight, for your willingness to serve. If you're an Oceanside resident and you have any questions about the district in which you live, please log into the city of Oceanside website. Thank you for watching this special election edition of North County Roundtable. KOCT will be, also be playing programs featuring the pro and con representatives for the SOAR initiative, candidates for Oceanside City Council District Two. All these special election programs will be shown on Cox Cable in Oceanside, a TNT U-verse service countywide, and as video on demand on our own koc.org website. Be informed about your community by watching North County Roundtable. Thanks, and we'll see you next time.